Exactly.
Can I leave this to record? They have a hospital meeting too.
Yeah.
So I will only put it out for a little bit and we'll think you can come back, Vivian.
Thank you.
Is it on?
Yes, my husband.
Sandra, is it on?
No, I'm sure we can start it.
I think she did. Sandra?
Sandra, is it on?
Did you start it?
I think it is on right now.
Okay.
It should say REC towards the top there in a little box.
Yes, it does. In the middle there, yep. And the numbers are moving.
Perfect, that's what I need.
Just so long as we don't report on the like, our takes on the like.
Yeah, the hospital is there in your meeting tonight too.
Oh, sure. Is that what's down at the Drink Me?
Drink Me, yep.
I saw the lights were on, I figured something was going on.
Well, maybe we could start having a battle.
Well, we can, you can propose from a second now of different date, place and time.
Do that tonight.
Oh, yep. I'm busy my chair from my office.
Sure.
Yeah, she messaged me. Twice over, so, yes.
Alright, I have five thirty. I will call the meeting to order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda as presented. I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Item B, five school board basics. Number one, put students first. Number two, follow the law in your own policy. Number three, respect the chain of command. Number four, base decisions on shared objective information. And number five, operate in the public eye. Moving on to item three, the consent agenda items. Kendra has handed out an additional sheet.
They're pretty much just regular bills. One of the larger ones is from NCC. That's our first semester concurrent enrollment, all the college classes and um, alternative high school, those kind of things in that bill.
Are there any questions, comments on any of those items? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Moving on to item four, visitors, public forum. I don't believe there are any sheets filled out. So we will move on to new business. If I can get. Uh, item A, acceptance of abstract of election.
So as you can see on the item A there, the abstract or the acceptance of the abstract of the election which came to us officially last week, it has the results for both District five and District two. And I learned something on there where it says scattering. I got pulled the one up, for instance, for District five. It says scattering fifty-five votes and then Kristen has a hundred and eleven. The scattering means that's a variety of other things. It could be a misspelled name or someone wrote the wrong person in the wrong district because then that wouldn't count or they wrote in Mickey Mouse or some other person. So, none that were worth totaling out, for lack of a better word. So, you can see that Kristen for District five on there and Jennifer for District two.
Any comments, questions? If not, we need a motion to accept the abstract of election.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the abstract of election. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed. That motion carried.
So then, now that that's carried, I have for both of them from the auditor's office, a certificate here to show that you have it in recognition and then they they give you Chapter twenty-one code, so congratulations. Congratulations. So it's just a certificate filled out that explains they won and then it's a copy of Iowa Chapter twenty-one code, which is, I'm sure, real interesting to read.
Alright, Stan, it's yours.
So, for item B and the last one here for our annual meeting here, this is Kyle's last meeting with us, so we thought this would be the time to acknowledge and thank him for, in looking back, his seventeen years of service to our district, so in recognition from this, we have a certificate and a little token of our appreciation to give him. So, Kyle, I just want to thank you for everything you've done. You've been a great mentor myself and over these last few years and now the first few months this year, so thank you for all you've done for the district, so we really appreciate that.
Thank you. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve.
And Mr. Boar, I contacted him about being here and he wanted to be here. But like we just said before the meeting started, the hospital board had their annual meeting, so that's where he's at. So he wanted me to make sure he has a little special present for you as well. And gift there, that's for Mr. Boar. And then the blue box, that can go in or call it, but
Thank you. And it was a pleasure to serve with all of you.
Thank you for everything you've done, Kyle. This is kind of
Thank you.
His last one here, so. You don't have a big speech for us, though?
No.
What?
I did not.
Yeah. If I give you the
I did notice in the pictures last week, I saw Greg attending IASB and then later on I did see a picture of the both of you out by the cookies. I do know that you were down there.
Can I get one? I'll hand you through if I don't think I'm making a mistake.
What's that here? Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle.
Alright, if there is no other business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carried. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle.
Good luck, you bet.
So Jennifer, you can come, come up here. I'm gonna log Kyle out though. Well, someone will end up sitting here, or otherwise if she sits here and then we can elect They're trying to figure out. And then maybe switch seats if necessary. His cursor is not. I'm trying to log him out and then
Oh.
You can log him out and log yourself in. Do you remember your
Is he, he's not logged out yet?
No, he is not. There you go.
They're a little temperamental, so.
Okay.
So, it should go here in a second. I'll let, I'll give you a chance here.
Okay, so we will now move on to the organizational meeting. And I'm gonna call that to order at five thirty-seven. The first item on the agenda is roll call. So I will call your name and you can just say that you're present. Laurel, Claussen.
Present.
Greg Atherton.
Here.
Kristen Byer.
Here.
Jamie Aaron.
Here.
Jennifer Brown.
Here.
Okay. Um, the next is to approve the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay. Uh, the next item is the oath of office for the new board members. So we will do that for both. So we'll do that for both Kristen and Jennifer.
Do right after that.
What, you want to start?
Do you want me to stand?
You want to stand together maybe?
I can come over there. Okay. Kristen, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duty duties of the office of board member in Sibley O'Chedon Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Can stand. Okay, Jennifer, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of board member in Sibley O'Chedon Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
I do.
Right before we get started, the next one, she's gonna go get her phone because it won't let her log in. Oh, it's right there. No problem.
Okay, so the next item is election of board president. And this will do with note cards. So the first note cards are to nominate someone to be on to be board president. And then after that, we'll, we'll vote after that.
So, yeah, you can have a discussion, but you can, you'll write down if you're nominating someone for. Kendra will read those who have been nominated and then we'll go from there, simplest explanation. So, you can have discussions and things, but right now what you'll end up writing down isn't necessarily vote, but it's nominating someone for the position. Which we'll vote on and it doesn't need to be seconded. It does not need to be.
Okay, so we have nominations for Laurel, Greg and Jamie.
Okay. Yeah, I'll give you two.
So the, this note card is to vote for the person that you would like.
So moved.
Yeah, so it's two, two, one vote.
So we gotta go back for the two that had two.
So Laurel and Greg both have two.
Okay.
So we'll have to re-vote for
You'll either vote for Laurel or for, you said Laurel and Greg, right?
Yes.
So you'll vote for either Laurel or Greg. I think those are one apiece.
Okay, so there's three for Laurel and two for Greg.
Alright, congratulation, congratulations Laurel.
So we still need a motion to
Yes.
approve Laurel as the board president.
I make a motion to approve Laurel Claussen as board president.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned, motioned and seconded. All those in favor uh, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, so now we'll do the oath of office for that and then you can take over. Okay, Laurel, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of president in Sibley O'Chedon Community School District as now and hereafter required by law? If you need to go out, so it comes up.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will do the same thing for the vice president.
Okay, we'll move on to election of board vice president.
So it'll be the same thing. You can write on there nominating someone for vice president, obviously, not Laurel.
So we have nominations for Greg, Kristen and Jamie. So now you can vote on those three nominations. Okay, Greg has the majority of the votes. So we'll need a motion.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Greg Atherton as our vice president.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, Greg is our vice president.
Greg, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of vice president in Sibley O'Chedon Community School District as now and hereafter required by law?
We will move on to appointment of board secretary and treasurer and
Yeah, so in this, this past, this has been Kendra that serves in this role and I would recommend approving her again for the coming year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, Kendra will be our board secretary and treasurer.
Sounds good, thank you.
And where we will meet, our date, time and location.
So currently, obviously, we meet the third Monday of each month, beginning at five thirty here in the high school IMC. And this has worked well overall in the past. We can change that, I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying we can change that if needed or we can leave that the same. Obviously, the months where that doesn't work out, then we usually make a motion to change that. For instance, I know it usually happens in February, we have to move it. Regardless of when we set it, we'll have to do that in April to be ahead of the budget and things like that. Those things come up regardless when you set it, so really, it's just up to you guys to determine if this is the best time that works for us as a school and you as a board to meet.
So do we have any discussion as far as if this time tends to be our best or do, does anybody think there's a different time? Okay.
I don't see any reason to change it, I guess.
Change it, okay.
That's good.
Do we have a motion then? Someone want to make a motion?
The motion said say
The date and time.
The date and time, yeah.
Continue to have our meetings the third Monday of each month, beginning at five thirty in the high school IMC.
Okay, second.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. And the appointment of board committees.
So I just put this on here, we'll have to once again decide what committees you want to serve on. In the past year, just as a reminder, facilities were Jamie and Greg. Finance slash negotiations was Kyle and Jamie and then the policy committee has been Kristen and Laurel. And we can have discussions and sometimes people want to stay on the same one, sometimes they want to be on a different one. Um, I just know from conversations in the past, you can set up whatever you want, but they usually recommend, and I've heard this multiple times, for new board members, it's good to be on the policy committee just so that you can kind of get an understanding of that. I think you two both did that from two years ago. Um, and you never know what will come up, we'll still have to review this year. We did the one hundred series, which we'll talk about tonight. But the six hundred series would be with that. Facilities, that just depends kind of of what's coming up when we meet on that and then, you know, it's kind of time of year dependent. Um, probably a little more in the winter and the spring as we do those end of the year projects for PEPAL and Save Money and then finances, just depending on what's going on. Probably in the middle of the year a little more in terms of discussions when we start working on negotiations with teachers and staff. Any questions, please feel free to ask me now, but we would need two people on each committee.
I wouldn't mind staying on policy. I think the, the last two years has been, it's been good to know policy. I guess I would encourage Jennifer to look at that, thanks Kristen.
No, I've been on that one for a while, so I'm ready to move on. So I'm open to either of the other ones.
Well, it's up to you. If you want finance, you can, or else I can take finance and go facilities.
I'm good with either one.
Well, let's, let's start with this. Are you okay with being on policy, Jennifer?
Yep.
Okay. Then we have one kind of covered, right?
Yep.
Okay. Then sorry, what did you say Greg? I didn't even say.
Well, I was just talking to Kristen, she went, she, I mean, I don't care either. Be something new for you either way.
Have you been on facilities for four years?
Pretty close.
Maybe you want to switch then.
That's fine, yeah.
Then I can do facilities.
Okay. Kristen on facilities and then, is that what I heard you say Greg, finance?
Sure. Jamie gets to stick with that.
Yeah, I can stay on both of them.
You can decide you're on both.
So I'll repeat what I heard. And then we can make the motion likewise. If you guys are good with this, policy would be Laurel and Jennifer. Facilities committee would be Kristen and Jamie and the finance committee would be Greg and Jamie.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Already had that, so. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Passed. Okay, um, the official publications.
So in the past, we have named two. The Sibley O'Chedon uses both the O'Chedon Press News and the Osceola County Gazette Tribune as our official publications and I would recommend continuing using both.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue to use the Sibley O'Chedon Gazette and the O'Chedon Press as our official publications.
Second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we will go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, passed.
Thank you.
You bet, thank you.
Um, next we will go on to appointing legal counsel.
As you may or may not be aware, we currently use Mr. Avery as our primary legal counsel through, when I was gonna look here, Cornwall Avery, Bornster and Scott from Spencer. They would be our first contact then for legal issues and questions. That doesn't mean from time to time, things come up that we have to work with other law firms or legal entities like Alers and Cooney, but he would be our first point of contact and reference as a legal representative.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Steve Avery as our legal counsel.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion?
She's still trying to sign in. Don't let me do anything.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. And open and roll my contact.
Currently in, the past, the superintendent has served in this capacity and that would be myself, obviously, for this year, so I'd recommend that continuing.
So moved.
Second. All in, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay. And appointing level two investigators.
So with the board policy, we have to indicate this and approve of this annually and we would use the Osceola County Sheriff's Department, excuse me, for the level two. We obviously have people who serve in different capacities that investigate things before we get to that point, whether that's student contact, bullying, harassment, things like that, we would follow, but when we get to the point that we need a level two investigator, then the policy dictates, we would contact the sheriff's office.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve this? So moved. Second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, then we'll vote. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. And our SO Education Foundation Board representative.
So this rolls open for the current school year and we do it through next year. They generally meet twice per year. We have met already once this year for the current school year. We'll probably meet somewhere in the end of January, somewhere in there for second semester. So this is the organization, they raise funds and then teachers can make or fill out applications and requests to get additional resources for their classroom that they maybe haven't requisitioned for or normally wouldn't get. Or that we went purchase through school. I'm trying to think of some of the ones this year. A couple of the teachers got additional books, special books for their classroom that they hadn't requisitioned for to add to their classroom libraries. Um, our high school counselor Um, our high school counselor got some, I don't know if crafts the right word, but supplies and crafts and things to use for, um, different small group techniques and things for when kids come in as kind of some, um, therapy. Do you remember some of the other ones off the top of your head, you guys, that got approved this fall? Remember classroom books, I remember the stuff for the counselor. If you're forgetting a few. But the appointee would serve about to approve these requests, and that's where the twice a meeting, twice a year meeting comes from.
Okay, so, I mean, looking for somebody to step up in.
Yep.
Who was in this role, Kyle or?
I was in that role, and I honestly didn't get to either meeting because I had conflicts with kid stuff on the times I had the meeting. So unfortunately, I never attended.
Is there anybody that would like to be on that board? SO Foundation?
And the rest of the group's pretty set up and, um, sufficient. They're, they're getting a few new community members to replace some that had been on there for years. But, um, Brad Jensen and, um, oh, Tracy Van Devene run a lot of that stuff. And then there's various other board members, or other members on the board as well.
I mean, I would if any, unless somebody else says they really want to.
Oh.
Okay.
Mine's me.
Alright, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Laurel Claussen to the SO Education Foundation Board as our representative.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed.
It's just for Stan.
Oh, Stan. Okay.
So the, oh, go on, sorry.
Next is the, uh, Osceola County Conference Board Member.
So the, the conference board's comprised of mayors in the county, the representative from the board of directors here at each high school district that's in the area, members of the county board of supervisors, and they maintain their main responsibilities to review and approve the assessor's annual budget and so forth. We received this correspondence, and I'm glad we read this ahead of time, and I'll read this here. It says, "Subject, uh, Conference Board Member to SO Community Schools. We are sending you as a reminder to appoint a member of your board to serve on the Osceola County Conference Board. The only requirement is that the appointed member is to be a resident of Osceola County. Greg Atherton has served for numerous years and we appreciate his past service. However, in an effort to comply with Iowa Code, Section sixty-nine point one six A, gender balance, a female appointee would satisfy our good faith effort to seek gender balance on this committee. It is important that this representative attend the conference board meetings because only the designated member can vote. The conference board meeting is usually consists of one meeting in January to set the budget and one in February for the public hearing." And this is the duties of the board to appoint an assessor, appoint members of the board to review the examining board and set the budget off, to set the budget for the officer of the assessor for the coming year. And then we would fill this out as necessary, so Greg can probably.
Yep.
Test how much you have to do.
It can vary from, I think, uh, Tracy Van Devene was on it before me, she said, "Oh, it's fine, you have two meetings, they're usually half hour ago." First meeting I went to, we had five meetings. And they lasted a long time. But they just had a little dilemma in the courthouse, but, um, other than that, it's usually not been too bad. You get to see Arlen.
You see Arlen.
As a mayor. But, um, and it's kinda interesting to see how it works. It's a little different from my standpoint, because it seems weird that you'd have these people come together to put on the assessor's thing. They do it in every county, I guess. So what lucky female would like to try and work out the agenda, gender? They'll meet, it meets during supervisors' meeting, right before, usually.
The initial ones in January typically, you said, correct?
Yep, and then they go over stuff and the budget of what she's got and. It's not too bad, I mean, if, if you knew a little bit what was going on in the county, it would help, but.
Kristen, would you like to? Okay. Do we need to go on that one?
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you have a motion to have Kristen as our county conference board member?
I move to appoint Kristen Myers as our Osceola County Conference Board Member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Kristen is our representative. Okay, next we have our IASB Board Advocacy Representative.
So IASB, the Iowa Association of School Boards, likes to have one board member from each school to serve as the advocacy representative. Um, it is recommended to have you guys discuss and, and pick that out. I think in the past several years, this has generally been Kyle.
Yeah, 'cause he's been on that board, so.
So I couldn't tell you exactly what other duties it has, other than they, they might remotely meet or down at IASB. I know they have their, um, annual discussion during that time. And I don't know what it entails outside of that.
So don't they have to go the night before or something?
That's the delegate.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, the delegate, yes, that's, yes.
I think this more has to do with when they advocate, you might just be kind of a voice of the board, maybe?
Mm-hmm. When we vote in like July and August, we kind of pick what our legislative priorities are for IASB.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, I don't know if they have to be in person or if they vote remotely, but if each school gets a vote or a say on that.
Yeah, I think we're right enough to say that.
This, this person would be the one that would vote or pick that out for us, is my understanding. Or did I cut you off?
No, I don't think any of it's in person, I wouldn't assume so.
So I'm guessing they send out information of what's being discussed, so that.
Mm-hmm. That's my understanding anyway. I haven't done this before either, so. Anyone interested?
Okay, anybody, yeah, anybody interested in advocacy, being an advocacy representative?
Would you like to do it Laurel?
Yeah, I would, I would do it, un- unless somebody else is saying, "Hey, this is really my thing." Okay. Nobody? Okay.
Make a motion to approve Laurel Claussen as our IASB Board Advocacy Rep.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? And passed. I'll do the best I can on that.
Yes.
Okay. Um, appoint PSYAC Representative.
So it says meets once per year, it should read that it's a minimum of once per year. We could only meet, that's all that's required, once per year. If they determine they wanna meet again after that meeting, we could. And that can vary just annually, each year when they wanna meet, just as long as it's during the, um, school year. As I say fiscal year, but technically school year. Um, they provide some input to questions or whatever is brought forth that we determine. For instance, that you see in the correspondence, we're meeting on Monday, the twenty-seventh, so a week from today, we're meeting with one to talk about some parent engagement things and so forth. Um, and we're going off the list that was created last year. Whether we have another meeting af- or not after that, I don't know. It'll depend kind of on what the discussion takes us on Monday night, so, um, but the representative from our district, the board of directors here, would have to be voted on tonight, and it can be up to two, so that we don't have a quorum.
Yep, and Kristen and I served on that last year, and it was good discussion, really informative. I don't know, what do you think Kristen?
Yeah. No, they're interesting and good to be part of.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They still looking at a lot of members, or no members, or?
On Monday, I said if they're planning on coming, they don't need to let me know, just get back to me from the list. If they can't make it, or they don't wanna be on there. And I think I've had four, four people just say due to life or whatever their changes, or year older, my kids are out of school, not to be on it anymore, even though they found value in it. Um, and maybe two more that couldn't be there, but would be, serve on it in the future.
There were quite a few on there last year.
Yeah, it grew a lot.
And. And the one thing I think I realized last year too is that there were a number, we had a few meetings, more than I think two last year, but, um, if you weren't there, I mean, for the number that he had on the list and how many showed up, we were probably batting about fifty percent, I would say. So there's always gonna be those conflicts, but it was really informative and you could get to hear from parents, students, teachers. It's good, it's a good thing. So, we have a couple of people that wanna. Jennifer?
I will, but not by myself, will somebody do this?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I would recommend, I would recommend putting Tewa on there.
Yeah, Jamie said he would too.
Sure.
I've never been on it, so, yeah.
Yep. That's a good thing, okay, so, all in favor, favor of having Jennifer in?
I'll make a motion to.
Let's have a motion first.
To put Jennifer and Jamie on the PSYAC reps.
Do it, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. Alright, authorized signatures.
So it's recommended, and we have to have this in the minutes, and then we turn this into, um, our financial institutions, but to have the president and the vice president be authorized signers on the district's checking accounts, as well as Kendra as our SBO and Board Secretary.
Okay, so is there a motion for this?
And it probably should, the motion should read President Laurel Claussen, Vice President Greg Atherton, so their names are in there.
I'll make a motion to. Designate the authorized signature, I was looking for the right word. Designate the authorized signatures of Laurel Claussen, President, and Greg Atherton, Vice President, for the district's checking account, as well as Kendra for the school business official Board Secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's passed. Alright, uh, continue streaming monthly, um, our monthly board meetings on YouTube.
So this one I added after coming back from a convention, and in looking back and hearing some other, in one of the sessions I went to, superintendents talk about it. Um, it's a good thing, I couldn't look back that we ever had a motion or an agenda item that we did this. So, I mean, and there's nothing that requires us by code to stream them. Um, I think it's a good thing, but there's nothing that requires us to. And so, um, I just had some feedback, they said if you're gonna do that, it wouldn't hurt to put that as a recommendation from the board, and if we ever decide later to not do it anymore, then we would do likewise and so forth.
Have you seen, or can you tell who's been watching lately, or with the number?
I haven't recently, um, the September one, I don't remember looking at the October one. If I remember the September one, I thought, when I looked, it was like approaching a hundred views.
I've seen that before too, and I was, I was pleasantly surprised. So there are people watching it, which is good, especially if they wanna know what's going on.
Yeah. I don't remember looking at the October one, but I remember the September one, and that was only a few days afterwards when I was setting things up for October.
Okay, uh, is there a motion on this, somebody would like to make?
I'll make a motion to continue streaming our monthly Sibley O'Chiden School Board Meetings on YouTube.
Okay, second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor, or is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that was passed. And the annual financial report.
So first, and I'll go to our financial health one, does everyone want? I'll go to the, oh, of course. Treasurers' report and so forth, and just, we're supposed to present this annually, and it kind of shows by fund. You can see for the FY twenty-three, where we ended where the big balance, balance was for the general funds, beginning at the end of the year, and also for the student activity fund. And then the ones that you're kind of aware of, you hear us talk about management, right? That we pay like some of our insurance monies out of, we pay monies for early retirement and things like that. Um, settlements, court costs, things like that come out of management fund. You can see the SAVE and the PEPAL, two different funds. We talk about that kind of together when we do our facilities updates, such as when we replaced the roof here just this summer. That comes out of SAVE and PEPAL. Um, we don't really have a lot of debt service, we don't have a geo bond or anything like that. Enterprise fund, does anyone know what that is?
That's on that sheet that I said I need to copy off after, after convention.
Yeah, it's, yeah, your nutrition, food, food service fund and so forth. So that's kind of where we set the beginning at the end of the year of each of those funds. I can come back if there's questions with that. The other one I put as an attachment on here, but I gave you a, a physical one. Um, before we go on in, in creating this, whether it's online or, or in person here, I wanna thank Kendra and Chrissy. They've, in the past, done a lot of work to prepare this, and they did this year. Chrissy kind of checking over and making sure it didn't have errors and printing it out, and Kendra's done a lot of work in terms of getting the numbers and working on it, us working on it together. And I know they did that in the past, but I don't always think they got the recognition for it. So I wanna thank them both for their work in helping do this. Um, as we're gonna discuss later this evening and in a little bit here, you're gonna start to see that we've talked about from this fall, some of the effects of just our declining enrollment. And it's not throwing up red flags, but you'll see some of the numbers were still positive, we still have good financial indicators. But you'll see they went down, and some of that's the result of the funding that comes from, um, our enrollment going down. And there's nothing out of whack, but you'll, like I said, you'll see those decreases, and we'll talk about this. But I think some of the reason that we're in that strong position is just some of the past boards and the administration, I think, just put us in a good position so that when these are happening, we can have discussion planned for years into the future and not have to make a lot of drastic choices that maybe some schools would. So I just wanna thank, especially, I know Bill did a lot of work with that, and the board that was with him at that time, put us in a position that we can at least have conversations and not have to have, um, public forums and worry about who has a job and who doesn't. So, um, I wanna credit the board with that, so. I'm gonna go through a couple of highlights, and then if you have questions, maybe at the end, or, and if you don't, that's fine, but maybe just some things to point out. What I'm gonna call is page four, but the table that has the green columns on it, and it kind of, the school has used this in the past as their ten point indicator. Okay, and you'll see all those are still green, that's a good thing, but some of those things, as you can see, from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three have gone, and, but we're still strong. Okay, just as an example to point something out, the current ratio, you know, was two point oh one, or two dollars and one cent for every, um, dollar of debt there. It's down to a dollar ninety-six. It's gone down slightly. That doesn't, that's not bad, it doesn't mean we're hurting, we're still well above where our intended goal is. But those are some of the things that I mean, that you can see some of those numbers have maybe gone down just slightly, but we're still in a, in a good situation here. Our unspent balance ratio, if you look at the end, okay, thirty-two point nine five percent last year, and then the, or two years ago in the past fiscal year, thirty-two point zero five percent. And as we talked about, last year was for the first year where we had just a negative unspent balance by about a thousand bucks. So that's why that went down slightly, and that's gonna probably happen again moving forward, but we're in a position, we can deal with that. And so that's what I mean, when you'll see some of those things, they're going down slightly, yes, we're aware of that, and those are some of the discussions we'll have, um, and, and look at some of those indicators tonight and so forth, so. Um, if you look at the expense. Uh, selected revenue and expense comparison on, if you flip over one page, the selected revenue and expense comparisons, just for our general fund, you'll see our change in FY twenty-three for the first time there. Were negative, that, so that means we had expenses higher than revenues, that was greater than that, greater than the revenues for the first time. And we know, we, we can absorb that, we're in a position, actually, we've talked about in years. In years past that we have to spend down our unspent balance ratio. And so we can do that, th- these are the ways that you do that, but we don't want that to get out of control, but you'll see that did go negative there for the first time. We just gotta be aware of that and look at that. Um, the unspent balance ratio, it's down about eight thousand bucks, like I said earlier and, and we know that we're okay with that, but we gotta be aware of that. The annual unspent balance ratio. Page that's on. It's toward the end here. So it's like the third from the last page from the end, it says annual unspent balance ratio. Ever get a chance to see what I'm talking about? Do you see that ratio? It's a hundred point zero eight percent. So that means we just spent a little bit more than what our annual authorized budget was for the year. And you can see the difference between the two, that's that eight thousand bucks that I was talking about. And we have a high unspent balance from previous years, so that's okay right now. But we just wanna be aware as that grows that we are making decisions. That will not allow that to get out of control. But that's what I'm talking about is for the first time. We, we overspent that by about eight thousand bucks. We could honestly, if we overspent that eight thousand bucks a year, we could do that for. Twenty years and not even be worried. It's when that gap starts getting bigger and bigger. Okay? The annual, yeah, you can see that's at a hundred percent, sorry. Um, our budget enrollment. If you look at the enrollment trend, budget enrollment trend, so I'm on the last page here and it says budget enrollment trend. Some of those numbers probably should look familiar to you when we talked about our certified enrollment. In our last few board meetings, when I mentioned that we're down forty students, so hopefully. If you were here, Jennifer wouldn't have necessarily been here for that, but when we talked about we're down forty students. And that just shows the trend from the last five years or so. Um, yes, we have the concerns for the declining enrollment, we've had discussions internally about that in here. Um, and I'm gonna later talk to how that affects our budget, um, later this evening and so forth, but just kinda being aware of that and keeping our eye and hopefully eventually that will. Flatten out for us. The other thing that I wanted to point out here as we finish and then I'll take any questions is answering the best I can, but our tax rate history by fund. If you look in there, the general, remember when we set our tax levy rates? There's really not a lot of the rate that we have direct control over. The general fund is. Driven by our enrollment. We don't really have a lot of say in that, there's a lot of things that come with that. Um, our voted PEPAL, we approve annually and then, and then we have a voter approved one. I guess we do have control of the debt service portion of our tax rate in terms of if we, like in the. Um, news recently, we had five area districts that had bond issues that passed, so then that would be where they would pay that out of. The one that we do have control of, year over year, is the management fund rate. And that's something that we'll have to address this year, we'll probably have to raise that a little bit just because of. Rising insurance costs and other things that are coming out of there. But that's really the only part that we have a, a lot of direct control of each year. But if you look at our total rate and the things that we've done to keep that low, we're still significantly below the state average. Um, and remember the thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents is the state average, that'd be the middle. So, I mean, we're quite a well below that point and we've done some work to do that. I'm not saying that the rate will go high enough to go above that, but we'll probably have to raise that in the future or have discussions on that from where it's been the last few years, so. That's a lot of talking by me, I realize that, but any questions on that or anything that we've just mentioned?
He went over that part too, okay, alright. A lot of work, I agree. Thank you for compiling all that information and. Okay.
So really, the motion would be to approve the.
To approve this report, okay, so do we have a motion to approve the annual financial report?
I'll make a motion to approve the annual financial report as presented.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Opposed? Okay, passed. Alright, moving on to ad, our administrative reports. Principals first?
Sure, yeah, like I said in my report, it's, it's kinda hard to believe that we're already at Thanksgiving break here coming up this week. It feels like we're just kinda keep plugging along, um, exciting things happening. Um, we continue to have weekly MTSS meetings, MTSS standing for Multi Tier System of Supports to continue to meet. Kids where they're at, um. In multi areas, um, we, we, our focus over the last year and a half has been really reading. Um, I'd like to kind of expand that to get into some of the math and some of our, um, really identifying. What our tier one instruction, tier one meeting, what everybody gets and, and really refine. What interventions we're putting into place as kids need more support, students need more support. Um, with some of the struggles that we're seeing, both in, like, like I said, our focus has been reading and literacy, but now also in math and also behaviors and how we can continue to. Support and make the best learning environment for all students, so. Um, and that flows very nicely into our professional development as well. Um, staff continues to work on their PD goals of, uh, how they can continue to refine and implement. Their, uh, MTSS process in terms of formative assessments and, and how that affects instruction. Um, we've also been doing some curriculum work and then our in-house mentoring program continues to. To be run by, uh, Mr. Schoder and Mrs. Homers as our instructional coaches. And doing a great job, again, just a huge benefit to our buildings and to our kids to have those programs in-house, so. Yeah, kinda short and sweet, I guess, to the point, but, um, we continue to plug along and, and seeing some really good gains with our kids.
For my report, uh, just in the general information, went over some things that have happened in this past month, so started the winter sports season, which is really exciting to see kids in the gym and up in the wrestling room. Um, the fall play, the stuck pot was a great success for our new director, uh, Francis Ryder, did a great job. Uh, we had a fall cleanup where we had thirty volunteers complete about twenty jobs around town, raking leaves, different things like that and, uh. Uh, six student volunteers were a part of that as well. Our robotics team secured seventeen thousand dollars worth of grant. Money to fund the first two years, so that's a new program we're starting. And Mackenzie Brock just now, just recently married, is our main advisor for that program. Mr. DeZao has offered to help out as well, uh, they do recommend two advisors for the program. Our Veterans Day program here at the school went really well, um, and Tristan Bremer, our new egg teacher. Helped organize that along with Lori Krymbrink and I thought they did an awesome job making that ceremony happen, so just wanted to. Kinda update you on some things that have been happening. Uh, PD, I would echo what Mr. DeZao had to say, um, we're continuing to work on our MTSS. Primarily in the secondary, uh, teachers were focusing on, uh, formative assessments. That's where the majority of our teachers place themselves. Um, BLT wise, we're continuing to have discussions about how to better utilize success time, especially at the high school level. Kent and I have been talking a lot about schedules and how that might look for next year, again, just trying to better meet the needs of our students. Trying to incorporate some things that we maybe haven't had time for back into our schedule. Um, along with the PSYAC discussion of parent teacher conferences and how to better incorporate. You know, parent involvement with a school, we've been talking about that at BLT as well. Um, we have some staff morale building dates coming up, December twentieth and, and January nineteenth. We've worked on scheduling and, and doing some things for our staff for those days, so. And then my, uh, staff attendance is at the bottom of my report, if you wanna take a look at that.
How many people got signed up for the robotics?
Uh, ten, actually I got the list right from you. Eleven students, yeah, so I'd say ten of them solidly, solidly committed. One's kinda on the fence yet, if he's gonna do it or not, but, yep.
How'd you guys think conferences did overall?
Attendance for middle school and high school isn't where we'd like to see it, in that twenty to thirty percent range. Um, so that's part of why we're having that PSYAC meeting and discussing it in BLT is how we can increase that attendance. So, elementary was?
Yeah, the elementary attendance is, is, um, a much higher rate, we're in that upper eighties, I think. Ninety-ish percent, kinda approaching ninety percent in terms of attendance, I think in terms of. Parent contacts, I would even put it a little bit higher than that, um, but yeah, how can we continue to encourage that? Partnership and collaboration throughout the process, not stopping at fourth grade or fifth grade or whatever the case may be.
We would like to see the middle school get up to that eighty percent mark. Um, high school typically conference attendance is a little lower, your students are a little more, um. Responsible for their own education at that age, so it makes sense that would be a little bit lower, but, uh, yeah, something we're working on.
Are all the teacher's time slots full in the middle and high school?
No, there's time slots open for parents to book.
I just ask, cause me having so many, I can't physically get, like I couldn't get to. I was close to fifty percent of them, but I couldn't even make it work with the slots that were open and.
Yeah, so with that, we've been talking about how we structure it. You know, parents booking time slots with individual teachers. Another idea we're considering is you have a home base, the success teacher. That you get the majority of the information from and then you can go to visit other teachers specifically if needed. We're hoping that is a change that can boost attendance, we're trying that at the middle school. For this next conference, so.
And that's part of what we hope to accomplish through PSYAC is just, okay, if we're not having good attendance, is there a way? That's feasible that we can do better in discussion with parents and community, among other things, that's not the only topic we'll talk about with engagement, but that's one of them. Because. If we're getting low attendance, then we might as well figure out what, what's gonna work better.
Stan?
Thank you to you both. Um, as we've discussed, trying to tailor my reports a little bit towards our, our PD goals. That, so first talking about strengthening our district literacy and math. Um, our PD has been focused on that continually, those guys have done a great job, obviously mentoring's a part of that, doesn't tie directly maybe. Into literacy, math, but I think it does indirectly in terms of supporting our staff with that. Um, we've been digging in and we'll talk about this, not tonight, but hopefully in the future with you guys, talking about our school performance po, profile. Um, I guess on the other side of it is, if you saw last week with, um, the Facebook post, getting the best schools recognition. And I attached those down there, open up, oh yeah, perhaps right here, but. Both our middle school and our elementary acce, um, received recognition for that. The primary factors in looking into that goes off of, um, our sub group scores, but just how well we performed and the number of students. In each building that are proficient in reading and math and then also across different subgroups and categories, so I. Just commend our staff and, and these guys, obviously that came from last year's, but just the work that they've done to do that, so that's kinda goal one. Group, um, goal two is working with improving staff retention and engagement. Um, I've done some initial conversations already with SOEA and with you guys tonight now. Approving who's on finance, we'll probably start talking about that in the near future and getting things going. Because that's gonna tie into things with our budgets and who's coming back and deciding what we need to do for staffing for years to come. And then meeting with these guys, talking about different fun outing, um, outings, I put that in quotes, but just different things to do with the staff and they've. Been coming up with some things, Casey mentioned some of that in his report. Um, probably just with the, which we'll talk about later here, but with the change in our enrollment and how that'll impact our budget. Um, this year, probably a lot more of my time has been spent on goal number three here and working with things to keep us fi. Financially stable and viable into the future. Kendra and I have been working on the, um, line item budgets and although we're. Not finished, we've been digging in and spending a lot of time with this, working on projections and things that when we have a work session, which we'll talk about later. Looking into and trying to present that to you guys in a, in a manner to make that understandable when you don't live that reality every day. Um, we've already approved early retirement and looking at how that will affect our staffing for the next year and then. Just talking about the FY twenty-three report, spent a fair amount of time on that that I presented already tonight, so. Those are the main things that I've been spending my time on. One of the things with advocacy, at the beginning of the year. I requested we join an organization called RSAI, it's the Rule School Advocates of Iowa. And they specifically do things to help schools. Um, especially with the legislature that are, we're not Des Moines, we're not Urbendale, we're not Ames, the, you know, they have different priorities in the smaller schools, so. Um, when we, I was down at the convention last week, they gave me this just so that you have their name and if you look and hear about it later, but. They asked me to give you each one of these, it's pretty simple, but to our current board members. And so forth, but if you ever have a chance, you can look into that and a little bit of what they do, but we are a member of that this year. And look forward to continuing doing that in the future, so.
Thank you to all three of you administrators for your reports.
Have you had much early interest in early retirement?
We have, a lot more questions at this point, but it, it's also early, but I mean, I think we'll garner some interest and, and so forth, so once they turn them in. Um, there's a forty-five day period, so when that's up, that's those that turned in, we'll present it to the board.
Any other questions or anything, okay? We'll move on then to board committees.
There we go. So the finance and facilities, we have not met in the last month. Policy, we met. Fairly quickly after our last board meeting. Um, to talk about some of the things that are being presented tonight and then there was an update that came out in the last month from. IASB on some recommended policy changes, changes that I wanted to get tonight, so we kind of did those remotely. I don't know if Laurel or Kristen, you have anything to add? We're really the only group that's met since last month, so, did you guys have anything to add?
No, I don't. Okay. Okay, um, Ava, recognition of excellence.
So, congratulations to Ben Byers on his top fifteen finish and medal at the state cross country meet, he finished thirteenth. Congratulations to the high school varsity boys team along with Coach Ryan Wiersma and Coach Lisa Block for qualifying for the state cross country meet as a team. Um, eighth grader Ella Howard and sixth grader Ariana Lowry performed at the Opus Honor Choir Festival on November sixteenth in Ames. And then four high school student, high school band members were selected for the Northwest Iowa Bandmasters Association High School Honor Band. Claire Freeman on the clarinet, Hannah Prins on the clarinet, Carissa Holstein on the horn and Keaton Crowe on the euphonium. Thirteenth, thirteen, seventh and eighth grade choir members were selected for the Northwest Iowa Choral Directors Association Honor Choir. And then the following students were inducted into the National Honor Society. Michael Block, Elliot Daker, Teagan Henricks, Sophia Hesick, Alexis Holstein, Alyssa Jacobsma. Addison Langstrat, Macy Poland, David Poppen, Erica Rosenberg, Brianna Taylor, Claire Freeman, Elizabeth Walton and Natalie Weber. And then for our twenty twenty-three all academic teams and awards, volleyball was distinguished with a team GPA of three point six three three. Football was excellence with a team GPA of three point oh five two. Football cheerleaders was excellence with a team GPA of three point one oh, three point eight oh. Cross country boys was distinguished with a team GPA of three point three four eight and cross country girls was distinguished with a team GPA of three point six one eight. And then for our volleyball awards, um, Ava Deagle and Brooke Platt received academic all state and academic all conference awards. And Grace Seiler received honorable mention all conference. And then for football, Dalton Wingate received honorable mention all district. Michael Block received academic all district and first team all district. Cassidy Henricks received academic all state, academic all district and first team all district. Sam Schneff received academic all district. Noah Dodden received second team all district, Kane Julius received first team all district. Alex Bosma received academic all district. Dawson Cracus received the first team all district. Dominic Marco received second team all district and Gavin Stanton got honorable mention for all district. Now for football cheerleaders, Bailey Grease got abit, academic all district and Hannah Prince also got the academic all district. And then for cross country boys, Aiden DeZao received the academic all conference as well as academic all state. And Ben Byers received all conference runner, state qualifier and district runner-up. And then for cross country girls, Teagan Henricks and Macy Hoakes received academic all conference awards. And then our October generals of the week, for the sixth, the elementary was Aleah Lawson. Middle school was Ryan Munoz. High school was Dawson Cracus and Alexis Contreras and staff was Ally Pepe. On the thirteenth, the elementary was. On the thirteenth, the elementary was Adeline Block. Middle school was Amadele Benitez. High school was Morgan Van Heuvlin, and staff was Ashley Hench and Natasha Wagner. And on the twentieth, the elementary was Chanel Ramirez. Middle school Cecilia Farado Barahona. High school was Sebastian Lingo, staff was Ashley Gensrock. And on the twenty-seventh, the elementary was Wyatt Vopel. Middle school was Genesis Hernandez. High school was Carissa Holstein, and staff was Rebecca Fink and Amy Dykstra.
Thank you for that. Lot of recognition there, that's great. Okay, moving on to the IASB update.
So we're just in discussion, but didn't know if there's anything from those that were able to attend they wanted to share, bring back, or talk about here that they got out of. Obviously, I've never gone before and I went and um I thought it was really good, but I'll add at the end. But did you three that went have anything that you wanted to share or bring back?
Some really great speakers, I would say, just motivating and just giving good information. Breakout sessions were really good.
Mm-hmm.
Do you guys have any that really?
Sure. Trying to remember which ones I even went to. Um, I just thought that that uh the generational speaker was really good.
Yeah.
That was, I went to his follow-up, it was two hours, it lasted like it was a half hour or so, like, you know, the millennial kids, the Gen Z's now that are eighteen to twenty-three and, you know, how they learn and wanna be learned or taught.
Yeah.
What trips their interest or trigger to it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And even working with community members and parents.
Same way, yep.
Yeah.
To know how to.
Yeah, it was very interesting.
Yeah, and what what events have taken on in their lives, why they like that, you know, it's, you know, to step back and take a look at that, I think is pretty important.
Yeah, that was a really good one, I went to that follow-up too. I tried to go to a lot of the technical ones being new. I would say the, and I shared some of this with Kendra when we got back and today too. But I think the good thing was like some of the aha moments and reminders were things that we're doing already. And it wasn't like, ooh, we're not doing that right. There wasn't anything like that, so that was good. And many of the questions or things that we deal with, other school districts are dealing with, or they have a bigger issue and you can kind of see how they're handling it um and so forth. And so it's just kind of, you know, like a little one in one of the meetings, someone asked, you know, they said, hey, our our superintendent tells us when we do our public forum that we're not supposed to respond with the public. And the lawyer's like, absolutely, that's your recommendation. And not that we're having an issue with that, but you know what I mean? We've had the same question and comments. And so um people are asking that all over, especially if they're a new board member. And so it's just things like that, you're going, okay, we are doing the right thing, so that was, that was good.
Yeah, I think that session, I think both of you guys were at that one too, where they had us in groups working.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and you were able to talk with board members from other districts. I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, I always want to collaborate with those.
Yeah, yeah, make some good connections.
Give out some different ideas, if you know what they're doing at the same time or.
Right, right. So.
Well, thank you all three for going, I really appreciate that, so.
Okay, so our, under our discussion items, our literacy presentation from CTE. I see Mr. Vermeer here.
Stand up, do I get to sit down?
Come on.
Do whatever you want.
Um, first of all, I just want to add a CTE, so CTE stands for Career Technical Education. But it does involve, we have, I kind of say we're on our own islands, because it involves counseling, business, agriculture, industrial tech, computers.
Facts.
Business, facts. So we kind of all have our own necessary thing that we teach, but nothing really aligns with each other that is sequential from one end to the other end. So we are that group, uh we are, the classes that we do teach, I think are applicable to a lot of kids with their future. But some of them are also places where there's hands-on opportunities, where kids don't get to have that in other classes. So we are able to meet those kids' needs and desires in different ways than maybe our traditional classrooms are. Uh, but before we get started with that, um as a representative for them, just listening to all the committees and all the things and all the times you guys put in, thank you for what you do for the district, um decisions you make, leadership direction that you give us as teachers, and your commitment to doing that, so thank you for that. Um, if you can go to the next screen. Um, what I basically did, since we are kind of on our own islands, I just asked the teachers, counselors to come up with kind of a highlight of something that they're doing this year that's kind of unique. So you can read those, uh counseling, they have a shout-out board for students and staff that they give kind of recognition for um things that they're doing positively down in elementary school. Uh, we did take two elementary teachers with us to ITech, which is the Technology Integration Conference that we had in Des Moines. We typically try to go every year just to find out some new means of use of technology in the classroom, uh what things are out there that maybe we can better meet students' needs um in different areas. Uh, one of the things that is being, are going to be implemented is computer science offerings at K- twelve level. I believe it was this year, Mr. DeZale, or was it next year for high sc-? I think it's this year for high school, next year's middle school, and the year after that's elementary. So we've already put a plan in place um on what that's, what we want that to look like. We're still trying to figure out how we're going to incorporate that into the elementary building, uh just because of time and all the other requirements that are there. So they came along to try and get a picture for that for the next one. In the middle school, um they're doing a bunch of different activities with counseling there as well, looking at um emotional awareness. They did work with the Lutheran Services of Iowa, um talking about bullying prevention with sixth graders. So we are bringing outside services and helping um make kids aware of some concerns with that. And maybe are you the bully, or are you being bullied, what that looks like, so we can become more aware of that. Computer science are doing a bunch of different things with programming, drawing, web design, which is pretty neat to see because um as they come into the high school, they are gonna be more aware hopefully of what is out there. I think in our area in Northwest Iowa, we aren't probably as exposed to some of the technical career options that are out there. So by giving them that exposure in the middle school, it can give them kind of a direction of maybe that might be something they want to do in their future and possibly take some classes in the high school that'll be aligned with that, in the high school. Um, in my program, um last year we didn't have as, any students sign up for it, but this year we did from a digital marketing class. And one of the things we're working on is learning how to use um digital media as a means to market to people for their future possibly in business. But for our aspect, what I'm doing with that for the school is we are taking and getting information about different things that are going on and creating videos to help project to our community uh about those. One of those, that picture you see there is the Health, was it Healthy Iowa Walk? We did take video of all of that, so we're gonna be able to use that to portray and tell the community about what that looked like, what, why we did it, what was involved with that. Industrial tech, here at the high school, they um last spring built multiple vegetation gardening bunks um that were used or brought out to the community that people could use. So it gave the kids a purpose for why they were learning, the skills they were learning, because they're able to create these bunks and then actually be able to see them out in our community and maybe take some pride in that. Uh, in the high school, the Family Consumer Science, I don't know if you made it to the veterans program, but they gave out this quilt that they made last year, which is kind of neat. They learned how to sew and to do the quilting, um but they actually were able to affect somebody else's life with that. And egg mechanics, they're learning how to weld, and they're making some projects with pumpkins and turkeys for the theme of the season right now. Uh, something new that we have taken on this year, which I'm not, has this been presented to them yet or not? Okay, so you know about the CAPS program. Mrs. Haken and Mrs. Schroder are the two instructors that are in charge of this. But basically what it is, is a chance for students to sign up and maybe, uh, you could say it's maybe like a non-traditional type learning environment where they're getting uh tied into and working with some of our businesses in the community and being able to make those relationships, but also understand how um employment, applying for those positions and all that would look. Uh, I mentioned this last year, and we got some more information on this now. CTSO is career and technical student organizations. The state is putting, I would say, some kind of pressure on school districts to have all of our CTE curriculum areas have these CTO, CTSOs. We already have and have had FFA. And we have tried to have conversation of being able to have the rest of us kind of go underneath their realm and work that together. And they're making the push that we all have to have our own. So the difficulty with that, I mean, in a theoretical situation is great because it gives kids more opportunities. The problem in small districts is you're drawing from the same population of people who are now fighting each other to get these students involved. And you pay memberships to these organizations, so where's that money gonna come from? So we're still having those conversations right now. They're saying that next year, we need to have this in place. We'll see how those conversations go the rest of this year, if that continues, or if they push that back, or that might change. But to make you aware of, that is becoming a requirement, which in turn could end up being some monies potentially that need to be spent for them. And is there any questions you have? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Vermeer.
Yep, thanks, Matt.
Lot of good things going on there. Okay, I'm.
We need to have a board policy and finance moment. This will probably take a little bit longer than that, but um kind of pigging back and off of what we were talking about when we went to convention and I was bringing that forward. Um, I had looked into it and then at our last session, they were awarding these awards to schools that had achieved this. And um Laurel, Greg, and Jamie's, you know, started noticing, and what is that about? Will we even have a a policy that kind of relates to this, which I'm linking up to? High, high achieving boards work as a team to create expectations for students. And it's foundational to the governance structure that we focus on, and it says going to conferences and things like that. And working with the Iowa Association of School Board Members to participate in qualified learning opportunities to achieve the annual board award. So putting that as a goal that's out there, we even have a a policy that kind of addresses that. So um I'm not gonna go through every link here, but basically the idea behind the program is, and having a discussion that we can make this as a goal, ideally achieve that, is you can attend different events and you get hours of credit. So when I was looking into this, all of the board members that we had last year had eleven or more hours. And you get recognition when we get to fifteen. We did that without even trying or knowing. I'm sure when I brought that up, none of these three knew that. Well, you get six for attending, just attending the convention. I think you get six hours. So they haven't updated for this year, and it, it starts, the program starts each year for the board on November first and ends October thirty-first. So we're flowing over. Doing things when LeAnn comes and provides training gives us, depending on the length of time, to two to three hours a night. I've looked in and I emailed, I haven't heard back, but when we do our own in-house work sessions, I believe I can apply and we can get credit for doing that. But it's just taking those educational opportunities for you guys to get some education and learn about the things we're doing at the board table. And then when you've done that, you get recognized at the state level, and you can kind of show your local patrons that, the work you're doing to do that. So some of those links will specifically um tie into that. So did you guys have anything to add? I mean, I know we talked about it a little bit when we were down there.
I think it's something we need to really, we just need to give a little more, and we'll be there at this fifteen hours, since we've come pretty close. So thanks for looking into that.
So yeah, we'll keep that discussion going, and I'm hoping like um we're gonna talk here later, the next item here, about our next work session. And then, you know, we could even get credit for that if I understand it correctly, so. The term we're gonna talk about tonight, and I'll do a little bit of presentation here on it. Put those around for me here. So you'll hear us talk about, and especially in the spring, we'll talk about SSA and and what the governors proposing for an increase, one percent, two percent, three percent. And everyone assumes, yes, the higher percentage is better, that's true, but what does that actually mean? And so try and explain that to you, um some other terms that you gotta know, our UAB or Unspent Authorized Budget, you'll hear some call it the Unspent Authorized, um our balance or whatever, that plays a role into this as well. But the state supplemental aid, that's what SSA stands for, when they're talking about that each spring. And it's the additional amount of funding that we get, okay? So the state has, and I'm gonna call it here for our terms, the state cost per pupil that's given each year, and that that's set. So for instance, in FY twenty-three, the state cost per pupil was seven thousand four hundred thirteen dollars, okay? That's what we get for each student that's enrolled here, and that, that's what drives our budget. That's what our revenue coming in. There's other things that come in, but for the most part, from state and local purposes, that's what comes in. So when they say um SSA is three percent, they'll take that seven hundred and fourteen, seven thousand four hundred thirteen dollars times three percent, rounded in the ear as whole dollar, that's two hundred and twenty-two dollars. So they're saying we get two hundred and twenty-two dollars more per student. So now our funding per student for the next fiscal year is seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars, okay? And that plays a big role into our budget, especially when you have decreasing student enrollment like we do, um things like that. But when you hear SSA, that's that increased amount that we'll get each year, okay? How that plays out here, to to show you a little bit, is we have very little control over the revenue. We have some control of our expenses to an extent. There's certain things we have to pay for, we're gonna have staff members, they take the majority of our expenses, we have some control over that. But revenue, we don't have as much control of. It it's really formula-driven, and it is what it is, okay? Formula and enrollment-driven, I should say. Um, it depends on how many students you have. So you take your enrolled or your certified enrollment from the previous year, and that drives your budget for the next year, and you multiply that by what your student cost per pupil is. So as an example, I'm gonna make up to you some easy numbers here. If we had a district with a hundred kids in FY twenty-three here, a hundred times seven thousand four hundred thirteen dollars means we'd have seven hundred and forty-one thousand three hundred dollars of revenue, right? Pretty straightforward, that's why I used a hundred, so we could see that, okay? Let's imagine a scenario where their enrollment declined for the next year. So we went down ten students, so instead of being at a hundred, we're at ninety, okay? Well, what that means is ninety times seven thousand four hundred thirteen is, now we, for the coming year, only have six hundred and sixty-seven thousand doll- six hundred and sixty-seven thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. That went down seventy-four thousand, okay? Why the increase in SSA is important is that helps us overcome some of that. If the SSA went up three percent or two hundred and twenty-two dollars a kid, we can take that ninety times that two hundred and twenty-two dollars, and we'll get an additional twenty thousand dollars, okay? That's new money to us. So in the end, instead of losing all seventy-four thousand, really we've lost a little bit less than that. You can see our budget will go up to six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, okay? So that's why that's that's important, because when you have declines in enrollment, um we need some of that money back. So when you hear that in the spring, when they're advocating for, you know, three percent, four percent, five percent, it hasn't come up with inflation, that's what they're talking about. When you hear that, that SSA is that difference in funding or revenue per student, okay? So this won't, yeah, our decrease went down to fifty-four thousand. So this isn't exactly how it does, but playing it out here, we've talked about our certified enrollment this year was down forty students, okay? So if I take those forty students times seven thousand six hundred and thirty-five bucks, that's three hundred and five thousand dollars less revenue we would get from one year to the next, okay? If they don't increase SSA, if we don't get an increase in the amount per student, that's how much we'd go down, okay? If you get an increase per student, if we got an additional, if they go up three percent, I think when we were pending it out, that's two hundred and thirty dollars a student, and then you take that times six hundred and eighty, we could recoup about half that money. Because we have six hundred and fifty students roughly in the district, take that times the increase per kid of about two hundred and thirty bucks. Instead of being down three hundred and five thousand, we're gonna be down a little over a hundred and fifty thousand. That's the importance of having that increase in SSA, when you hear about that in the spring, in terms of how that affects and impacts our revenues as a district. So when you hear about that, I'll try and keep these little reminders, you know, we kind of live in that world every day. You guys just hear about it when we're talking about it, two minutes here at a board meeting. But trying to answer those questions and make you aware, especially as we move forward and we talk about what that'll do to um some of our decisions with staffing moving forward, you at least have a little bit of background, so. Makes sense, or is that all gibberish?
I like these little. I like these little moments that you've decided to do, because I think budget can be really difficult to understand.
It can be.
Especially with all the acronyms.
Yeah, I tried to not put too many, or at least describe them, but.
At least describe them.
They, uh, generally when they're talking budget stuff, they, they use acronyms all the time. It's hard to keep up. So with that being said, I know we sent this out, but on February twenty is the date we have set. I think I put it on the school calendar if I remember right, but just keep that in the back of your mind. Um, I know things come up, but that's what we have set with Luann. Um, so Jennifer knows, she's with IASB and she does, um, board superintendent, she, she does workshops and training. So she's done those in the past for us. She came to us in August this year with the current board, myself. She's coming to us on February twenty, and she's going to lead a work session focusing on the eight traits, traits of highly effective boards. And then using, um, and discussing the formal superintendent evaluation process and finalizing that, and I'll talk about that later tonight. And we're scheduled to run from five to seven. What I would like for us is if we can, here, discuss a date, and I threw out some potential ones, For us to have our own training session here at the end of November, beginning of December. What we would do is we would focus a little bit more in-depth on our own local finances and some of the projections you've heard me talking about, And the different trainings I've gone to, and try and present some of that in a light version to you guys, so you can see that direct impact. And then also taking a little bit of a look and explain some of the things that we have admin have been looking at in our school performance profile. And so, I'm hoping we can come up with a potential time and, more importantly, date tonight. If we don't, we'll have to keep talking about it, but I thought it'd be far easier if we're all here at the same time to do this here. So, I had thrown out some dates on there and so forth. November twenty-seventh, I had put on there, but we are now, that's a week from today, we're doing PSYAC, so that's not going to work. We're not going to do it then. But we had to have twentieth, twenty-ninth, that's next week, Tuesday and Wednesday. Um, December fourth, sixth, or seventh. I didn't include the fifth, because that is when They have the ISB new board member workshop that Jennifer will go to and I will go to in Sheldon. So that's why I didn't put that on there. Or the eleventh. I thought we start getting too much later in that, we're to the next board meeting already. And then we're to Christmas, which is really scary to say. Thoughts there of what works or doesn't work? Is someone like, yeah, that doesn't, that absolutely doesn't work, or do any of those work?
I'm busy on the twenty-eighth, the fourth, and the seventh.
Okay. So I'm hearing the twenty-ninth.
On the twenty-ninth, I'm busy.
Okay, so we're down to the sixth or the eleventh of December.
I'd maybe shoot for the sixth, so I'll be, I'm going on the eleventh.
Sixth works for me.
I'm not hearing, that was easier than I thought it'd be. I'm not hearing too many conflicts, so should we plan on the sixth? December sixth? And we'll go at five-thirty. I'll do a little more information as we get closer and have that ready, but let's just pencil that in, December sixth at five-thirty for our next work session. And you kind of know the topics already, based on what I just said, we'll be talking about just future financial projections. And then, depending on how long that goes, maybe dig into the school performance profile. Just depends how long we, we have discussions. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Stan.
Anyone's going to start at five-thirty?
Yes, five-thirty.
Okay, moving on to new business, consider approval of SBRC applications.
So, the SBRC is the School Budget Review Committee. And that opens up based on our funding that came in this year and the certified enrollment that we submitted back in, um, October. They come back with, and then it, what we can do is we can modify and get the spending authority. It's not cash, But at least gives us the spending authority for open enrollment out. So this would be kids that, um, Basically weren't in our district last year, are in our district boundaries this year, but never attended school here and are opening rounding out. So maybe they moved in and then opened enrolled somewhere. We never saw them. It's not like they came here and left. Um, but for, for dollar purposes, we get the spending authority back on that. Um, correct me if I said that wrong, Kendra, but that'd be the correct way, right? And then, the, the second amount that we propose would be for those students that are in EL, are English Language Learners. Um, the funding usually generally follows them for just five years. But those that have exceeded that or need additional training, or, um, have had struggles, um, if they're still in the program, Based on how we have coded them with our Student Information Service, we can get some funding back. And so we would qualify for additional nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty-one in spending authority. That's not cash, but it's authority.
Should approve those separately.
Yes, two, two separate approvals.
Okay, so.
Make a motion to approve open enrollment out authorized request of Modified supplement amount of thirty-one thousand eighty-three dollars per student.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that one? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one is passed. Then let's look at the EL instruction beyond five years.
And the same thing, and you got to read the amount in the motion.
Make a motion to approve the EL instruction beyond five years application to the SBRC for the modified supplement amount of nineteen thousand six twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is passed. Continue with the sharing agreements.
Yes, I had sharing agreements and I thought we needed two, and we had already previously approved the one for girls wrestling, so that's why It has a subset, but only one A normally, I wouldn't do that, but I had to remove that because we had just needed to file signature. We had already approved it. So this one is for girl, or, excuse me, boys and girls soccer. Needs to be approved annually.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one is passed. Consider a new, approval of new contracts.
The only new contract will be for Anna Tovar as a substitute bus driver.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's approved. Athletic Boosters request for baseball scoreboard.
So Travis is going to present on behalf of the Athletic Boosters about the, um, officially about the baseball scoreboard, But go over some of the things from the football scoreboard and remind how that went. And I'll have some stuff up here to present as he talks.
Is it alright if I go up here so I can?
Absolutely.
Alright, I got good news. I don't have any more abbreviations for you.
Oh, good.
But my bad news is I got some more numbers for you, alright, so. Uh, I'm going to start off with a debrief of the outdoor, uh, football field track video board project that's completed. Um, and then talk about some other projects that the Sibley O'Cheaton Athletic Booster Club has, so. Um, Stan, do you have that, uh, Expense projection? That's, yep, the other one.
This one?
Yep. Alright, so, thanks to Arthur and Kendra for finalizing this thing out for us. Um, if you recall, and Jennifer, this is going to be kind of a first pass for you, but, uh, We asked for fifty thousand for the install. We had it estimated at about thirty-eight thousand five hundred. Um, what we actually used was thirty thousand two sixty-five, and really couldn't have been possible without all the volunteers, Um, that are, that make up the Athletic Booster Club board. Uh, but also Raveling Incorporated, um, and Mega Inc. for letting us use their equip, donating their equipment use, Um, and other things like that, that weren't part of the final amount total.
So this would have been last spring with James, if you remember, we approved spending up to fifty thousand out of, um, Save and Dabble For the installation of the board. They were hoping it wouldn't be that amount, that's what he's presenting here, but we had approved up to fifty.
So, come with good news, not, not, uh, Not the other way around, which is always a little easier on our part, so. Um, As far as, uh, the next one, Stan, that I'll need will be that, uh, Sibley O'Cheaton Athletic Booster Club, uh, yep, next one.
This one?
Yep, perfect, good. Alright, so this would have been the depiction that you guys saw last time. Really what I'm going to do is highlight the numbers and then kind of give you a little background too, so you get some idea of how this is going, so. Um, total project price for the video board, uh, and the components there was two hundred and seventy-five thousand, And we had fifty thousand on for the expected installation, uh, that we actually, so. That number has not been changed yet to the number on the previous sheet, but, uh, essentially we're thirty thousand below what we, Or twenty thousand below what we expected for a total. Um, another thing you're going to see changes over here, so lease terms, none of that stuff changed. We are paying back, uh, the entire amount that we did borrow from the school. So that is the hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred. Um, it was broke down into thirty percent down, which the Booster Club paid for of the two hundred and seventy-five thousand. And then sixty thousand for pre-ship, or sixty percent for pre-ship, which was a hundred and sixty-five thousand, the school paid that. The school also paid the final ten percent, which everything was up and performing properly. Uh, so, if you recall, the first three years of that lease agreement are essentially paying back The school for that portion. And then after that, this eighty-five hundred, that was seventy-five hundred. Um, with us having more sponsors and also looking at the jersey rotation that that, uh, does fund Of the previous advertisements that were out at the football field in discussion with Athletic Director Amy Elser. Um, we did move that up, so, uh, more money for the, the school athletic from year to year, uh, for that portion of it. Um, and then how those dollars come about for our revenue, so there's four of the anchor partners, those are essentially the, the ones in the corners. Uh, six of the founding, those are the three that are on each side of the video board. And then the premier are digital, um, so there's sixteen of those for the total of the hundred and six, which really just kind of flows down. Um, so if you recall, that first year, that was the thirty percent down that the Athletic Boosters had to pay to get the project started. Um, and then this number is really just these two combined, right? Sixty-four thousand and eighty-five hundred, so that gets you to the seventy-two. Um, once that falls off, the school's been completely paid back. We just have the eighty-five hundred for the Jersey rotation portion of that from year to year. So, did have some updated numbers, all positive for the Booster Club, all positives for the school boards, so that makes it really easy, uh, on our part there as well. Any questions? As far as that part.
So the project number you had up there of two seventy-five, that was correct. Let's see, it's.
Yeah, yeah, that's Daktronics' price.
Yep.
Yep, yep, great question, Greg. So the total project price for the, uh, Daktronics portion of it, two seventy-five, that was set. That was a contractual deal. Um, it was the installation that we had questions on as to what that was going to total up to. And we didn't want to assume any, you know, we didn't necessarily do it in the best of weather, if you recall. I think it might have been the first time we got rain all summer, so. Alright, Stan, I'm going to go just to, yep, door three. Alright, uh, this is more or less just a reminder of dates, so some of this stuff is reiterated. Uh, where we've got the thirty percent, uh, down, lease payments, so on and so forth. This is really the school, what we were asking, uh, for last time, which was the remaining seventy percent, which makes up the sixty percent and the final ten. Um, and then the, uh, installation, which I got to add another two hundred dollars in there, but we're close. Uh, and then those lease payments coming back, and then this just shows the fourth year going forward, so, um. Those are more or less kind of a reminder of the dates from what we presented before, but also Jennifer getting you up on it, so. That is my debrief for that. Now, the next I'd get projects coming up, do you guys have any questions?
Heard any comments from the advertisers?
Um, yeah, yeah, we had, we had comments from the advertisers. I'd say most of them positive. Um, The, there was definitely a learning curve between having it set up and when the, when the first, uh, product was expected to be delivered. Um, and thankfully, we did have two students that took on some of the criteria and got through that. They're a lot better at formatting images and videos than I would be, so, uh, and they did an awesome job. Um, and yeah, we can't thank them enough for doing it, so. Uh, they worked with Daktronics one day, uh, getting through that process, sat on a conference call with them another day, uh, doing the formatting and so forth, so.
Yep.
Um, Advertising, there, there's a lot more that we can do with game time stuff outside of the advertising, and we're hoping to grow on that next year and years to come. Uh, but we wanted to make sure we fulfilled the advertising agreements, so. We, we kept it fairly basic, um, this year.
Other questions for him, for right now?
Okay, moving on to future projects. Um, Stan, you got that image? Yep, it'd be that one. Alright, so, when we look at other projects, you know, we take into consideration all the, all the athletics. Um, and there, there is one at the softball field that we're also looking at doing as, as time comes. Other projects at the baseball field, so on and so forth. Uh, this was one that really kind of let in, uh, because The video board was so well received out at the football field, we actually had two sponsor spots that were wanted, um, but we were essentially done selling them. So, this scoreboard at the baseball field is a nine inning. The at-bat will do the pitch count, so that will satisfy what, um, baseball requires for tracking the pitch count digitally. The sponsor ad panel will actually split in two. So total length here is going to be ten feet high by twenty feet wide. Um, so you can imagine those sponsor panels will be plenty big at ten feet wide, just as you can scale it there. Um, what we're asking for in this, in this project, Um, per our experience with the installation of the video board, again, we're, we're estimating it fairly high. But we're asking for the twenty thousand of the installation costs that we didn't use on the football field project to be rolled into this project. Um, the Booster Club's going to buy, purchase, uh, the entire components from Daktronics. Um, we would be looking for the installation costs again at the baseball field up to that twenty thousand dollar mark.
So you know where this came about from too, is just looking at things that are in need. Um, the baseball scoreboard, and if you've been there, kind of hard to see during the daylight and so forth. But, the other part of this is, is if the control panel goes out, we're done. Because it's old enough, there's not a replacement for it anymore. So, I mean, it's one thing to replace a ball, but the actual components to run the board, it's an old enough model that they don't support. We can't go and say, hey, we need another controller. They don't make that anymore. Or if a connection between the two goes out, we're, we're going to be required to do it anyway, because they, they don't, they don't support that anymore. That's the age of that board.
A few other wins, I guess I, I kind of skipped over this, as we were doing the football field project, as that did come with audio. Um, there were four speakers at the football field, so, yeah, thanks to Tony Beavers, um, and Amy Elser and, uh, Greg Greenfield, Who helped relocate those, so there are now two at the baseball field and two at the softball field, because the football field now has its own PA speaker. Um, that's designed to go with the video board, so that was another piece that was, as we were working through it, found things that were compatible, And then were able to use current things we had and make other things better.
So really what we're looking at is the, what they're presenting is to get a new baseball scoreboard for the upcoming, um, baseball season. They're asking us originally, if you remember a year ago, those that were here up to. They're asking us originally, if you remember a year ago, those that were here up to, out of Save and Pebble, the fifty thousand for the installation of the football scoreboard. Um, we obviously came below that, so, I'm not going above that again, but that remaining roughly twenty thousand to apply towards the installation of the baseball scoreboard. I know their hope is that it'll be below that, because there will not be the same amount of, um, large steel beams, if you've looked at the parking lot with the football. This board's not nearly as big, so you'll have that cost, um, to be less, and then just the, the boring and the drilling it takes to place them would not need to then be as big, which is part of the installation cost.
Yeah, yeah, definitely installation costs expect, expected to be quite a bit, I mean, less steel, not as deep, not as tall, not as wide, so.
And it basically go in the location where it's at, I mean, kinda like the football board offset a little bit there, but basically go in that spot.
Yeah, we had discussion, uh, with, with Amy on that, and, and the existing spot where it's at, given how the sun kinda tilts through the summer, that, that is the most desired spot to have it on our, on our complex, so.
So there are, there will be two sponsor ships available for this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
They are, they are already sold.
They are, okay.
And they are a similar thing to what the football was, the payment, or?
Yeah, yeah, so the permanent signage is, is a five-year contract, yep, we kept that similar. Um, yeah, good question.
So you're basically asking for the twenty thousand just to roll over, that's what you're asking for from this?
Yes, yes, that was, that's what we'd like the school's commitment to be on this project, Booster Club.
Okay.
We'll take on the rest.
Take on the rest. Is there any other questions?
What's the total cost of the scoreboard?
So the total cost of the scoreboard is twenty-one thousand five hundred, and that is all the Daktronic components, so, it's not two hundred and seventy-five thousand like the previous one, if you're trying to compare apples to apples there. Yep, this is all the Dak, so you're gonna get the, the board, um, the control panel. Everything we need to run it, so to speak. Twenty-one thousand five hundred.
Is there any other questions for Travis? Okay, do I have a motion?
And if you're looking to make one, um, the motion could be up to
Up to twenty?
Up to twenty thousand, yep, for the installation cost for the baseball scoreboard out of, and then we, we would pay it like we did out of, for football, the same way out of the Save Pebble money.
I'll make a motion to approve up to twenty thousand dollars to, for installation on the new baseball scoreboard, uh, over Save and Pebble dollars.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that is passed.
Thanks guys.
Yeah, thank you Travis.
Okay, next we go to the one hundred series, first reading of review policies.
So, um, I linked the policies in here, but based on the year that we're in, um, trying to find the line that it's on here. There we go. Um, year's ending in three and eight, so, and I take that to mean the start of the year, so we're, year two thousand twenty-three, so a year that ends in three, so, part of the review is we have to review the one hundred and the six hundred series. So we reviewed the one hundred series policies, and in reviewing them, and as you can see there, we don't have any changes, so we can accept the first reading and waive the second reading of that. The one change will be in the, and I'll explain that in the next agenda item.
Okay, are there any questions on that? Okay, do I have a motion?
Make a motion for the first reading of reviewed policies without changes to the one hundred series and skip the second?
Is there a second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one is passed. Then we go to the one hundred and six.
So this next one was the one policy in this, the one hundred series that we had a change in, and it was a wording in changing, if you look it ad labeled guidance counselor, and to be consistent, refer to that as school counselor, so not a content, but just, uh, descrip- descriptive change? What you wanna call that, but it was just
Title.
Title change, yeah, being consistent with that. But nothing changed in content.
Okay, is there a motion on this one?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of policy one oh six with changes and to skip the second reading of the policy.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, we will go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one is passed.
So thi- this is what we reviewed remotely between, um, Kristen and Laurel and myself here, um, recommended from I A S B some updates to try and bring some policies up to date with some of the recent legislative changes. Um, I won't explain them all, I will gladly ask any questions here, but all the changes that are presented are what was recommended by I A S B, other than to the regulation, the five oh three point oh eight, regulation one, I think, um, I didn't present that, and I said we wouldn't do that, we're still looking into what that would look like for Sibley O'Cheaton.
Are there any questions for Stan?
Yeah, please, yeah, ask if you have questions.
So the one you're saying no to is
So
More.
The big thing with this legislative change is they want to list all these, um, an idea so that when kids misbehave, that you have consequences and so forth. And, um, getting lawyers involved with this and trying to word that with the intent of the law, but not hamstring your administrators from making, you know, when a kid, when a kid makes a poor choice and does something, that it ties you in, because there's a difference between, for instance, a threat. There's a difference between a first grader getting frustrated and said, you know, um, you know, not liking reading, go, I hate you, I wanna, pardon my French here, kill you, versus probably a high school student saying the same thing. And so, the consistency with that and what's defined, and how do you define, how do you put a definition on maturity level, and I don't know that answer, and that's what a lot of schools are still trying to figure out, and that one's kind of asking you to, to, to define that yet, so we're still trying to figure that out.
Okay, are we ready to make a motion now?
Do they have to be listed?
Yes, you would read the heading, like they
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of board policies with changes reviewed, four oh one point oh one, five oh three point oh one, five oh three point oh one R one, five oh three point oh two, five oh three point oh eight, six oh five point three R one, seven oh one point oh five R one. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passed. And do we need to have a separate? We don't need to
No.
No, okay.
We'll be good with the motion.
Okay. Um, Northwest A E A Board of Directors, District One vote.
Amy Jerns, and I believe she's the only one is running to retain her position for the Northwest A E A Board of Directors. Um, but we have to make a motion and approve that we vote and put our support towards her as running. My understanding is within the district, your vote counts as a percentage of your districts compared to the whole, which is why you can look on that page, within her district, we have seventeen point two percent. That's my understanding anyway.
Are there any questions on that? Okay, then is there a motion for, um, our Northwest A E A Board of Director?
I'll make a motion to support Amy Jerns as a District One Northwest A E A Director.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that is passed. Consider approval of initial superintendent evaluation process.
Okay, I put this on here so we can kinda maybe formalize and, and talk about this, and I'll make a proposal, and you can tear it apart or accept or whatever. Um, also knowing that Jennifer hasn't been a part of these conversations and what that looks like, and actually what the full evaluation looks like, maybe not all of us have been, but we've had discussions about doing that sooner in the year, the, the full one versus waiting till May or June. Um, and so, part of that reason is why Luann's coming in February, and so then, um, and I got this idea from a few other superintendents and talking about when they do that, if they do it early in the year. Um, initially in talking with the superintendent from Lamar's, his formal one is each year in March, and I've had some others that do that as well, so that's what I'm proposing, we would do our formal annual full one in March, and then we could do, it says mid-year, but the, the check-ins are discussions, then we would do, we could do quarterly or as needed, they would go in December, June, and September, and so by doing this, then I would say the next month in December, we could do kind of our initial check-in one, mid-year one, that we would do, but we would do the formal one in March, and part of the training with Luann will be to discuss and, um, prepare for that.
Any questions?
I think we've kind of Pretty straightforward.
Talked about this, Jennifer.
Well, I like the idea of having the check-in ones or whatever, too, just so we're plays on the same page and
Yeah.
Exactly, yes.
And I think it's really good, it just keeps us informed of progress and
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's good. So Jennifer, do you have any questions, cause it's all kinda thrown at you?
Nope.
No, okay, well don't
I'm sure I will.
Don't be afraid to ask.
I looked through all this stuff before coming tonight, but I'm sure that I will.
Yeah. Okay.
And this doc kind of just guides some of that discussion on the mid-year ones, I just put on there as a review, I know we've had them on there. And then I put the one, also just so you're aware, like I listed what, we had established as the, the goal, and then we can use that to drive it when we get to the one in March, that's not the one I wanted to come up though. There we go, and this is the form from I A S B, and as we get closer, we'll talk with Luann, and she can kinda guide and describe that process for this, if we have any questions on it, so.
Okay, sounds good. Well, that being said, and no further discussion, do we have a motion to approve this evaluation process?
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent evaluate, evaluation process as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that is passed. Okay, we are at our regular board meetings coming up?
Um, just as a reminder, the next regular board meetings, the next two months, I'll just keep putting roughly the next two months, I think that works
Yep.
As a reminder, so December eighteen and January fifteen, um, in December, we'll talk about the February one, on whether we need to change that date or not. On the work sessions, we determined the first one, I put two B D, but we put December sixth, I'm making sure I say that right, at five thirty P M, and we'll put that on there, and we'll discuss financial projections, performance profile, and we have one scheduled for February twenty, twentieth with I A S B workshop with Luann and discussing what we said, that doesn't mean like, we well or won't have another one, we could if we needed to, but that's what's scheduled in it. And if this is enough, then that's great. C I A C is a week from today on five, at five thirty. Um, and then, just a reminder, we have a session tomorrow that I think you guys are aware of at five.
Yes. Okay. Um, moving on to, do you wanna go ahead with the board pictures now, or have it after?
Let's do it at the end, but we put this here as a reminders, cause it's easy to, when we're done, to run off. But since it's a new board, um, we should have a picture of the board together, um, that's one of the things we had recommended, cause we haven't put that on our website, and a lot of schools do, we'll put that, and then individual pictures that we'll put on our site too at the end here, so we'll, I'm not a huge taking myself picture person either, but we'll try and make it painless.
Get a nice scoreboard. Don't you?
I, yeah, try.
Are there any talking points from this meeting that we want to point out, mentioning?
Our school's best recognition and
Yeah.
Lots of good recognition with the students.
Yeah, this is quite a long list over here. C T E, I thought had a nice, uh, rundown of what all the different areas are doing.
And I'm not surprised, but I am surprised, I'm always amazed, like, to like, all the academic recognition and all the kids that are getting it, they're in stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, if you look who they are, they're not just in one thing, they're in multiple things, and they're the kids that are doing
Yeah.
As well as anyone academically, so, bravo to them.
That's great. Anything else? Okay. Um, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. It's your job.
You're gonna take that spot out first time.
Okay, I, I don't have to, somebody else can.
No, you, you, that's good.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, and we'll take a picture.
Yes. Thank you everyone.
We also wanted to make sure the phone numbers that you would like on the board, on the website, just so people, if you do want your cell phones, if you don't want your
You, it is not required, so don't, I mean, like, I would not put, I'm saying myself personally, I wouldn't put myself as superintendent, my cellphone on there. You don't have to, I know some of them have that on there, a work phone, that's totally your choice.
Oh, they're on there now?
Yeah, they are.
They are?
Well, I think it varies, gotta remember here.
So it's either that or they can contact us by our
Yeah, your school email's automatically on there, if you want more. Kyle put his, I'm just looking here, I know he'll be down, but he has home phone. Greg, you have a seven five eight number, work phone, maybe, it says? Three four two six. Jamie doesn't, and that's fine, we just wanna make sure we have on there what you want on there, not something you don't. Kristen, just the email.
I have a cellphone.
It's the only number I have.
Laurel, just the email, it looks like.
Four six one fourteen sixty-six.
Yep.
Okay.
Kristen has a six oh five number? So do you guys want your numbers on there?
Three three oh, it should be, seven one two three three oh, forty one three one.
Seven one two three three oh, what?
Forty one three one.
Sorry?
Four one three one.
Four one three one, okay. And then the other thing is, um, the, we'd like to offer, um, fitness center memberships to you guys, you don't have too many personal board members, so if anyone is interested in a family membership, you can just let me know.
So if you already have a card?
Yeah, you don't have to pay.
Okay, so actually I messaged Chrissy this morning about getting ours reactivated
Oh, did you?
Cause it expired, and then she had messaged me that quick, so I was like, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope, you won't have to as a board member.
Okay.
So if you guys want one, you can say yes or no, or let me know, we'll, we'll get keys to you guys.
There's something we can do.
Weaver, do you want us to?
In front of a great picture.
Great picture, yeah.
Greg, you get in the middle, have that robe, turn to towels, maybe that look like gray.
Oh, no, no, I, this is just for my information.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
If we go in the two rows, do one of just those five first, that's fine, do one of those five.
Okay, ladies, turn towards, there you go.
Yeah, wow. If they have a winner, put it on the webpage.
I'm just gonna actually go right to her, so just look at right.
One down. One more, okay, there you go. I'm gonna do a couple with flash. Stay there. Stay there. It's like the kids still have. Cause the basketball. Oh, stop. Did, did you guys want, do you mean?
We don't really want.
Well, I should, I should say want, just to make, to make it, it made sense. Cause nobody wants to be, should be in pictures. I know better than to assume that. Push up a little tighter, since there's two more people, perfect. There you go. You guys, listen well. Okay, here we go. Exhale. One more. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
I have a few things for you to sign.
Thank you for everybody's patience and need to learn English.
So you're, you should hit the end, then she'll sit here and then you'll go and sign a few things at the end for the.
Okay, oops, I'm sorry.
It's not much, but sometimes it is. These are just some last one that we approved.
I think you need this here, right?
Yep, over there. Put it right on the card, yep. I'll try and remember then to turn off one that says your name instead of Kyle.
Just a little shorter.
I know you got a ton of stuff, whenever you want some, like reading.
Light reading?
It's just some additional.
Okay.
Resources that I S B gave me for new board presidents.
Okay.
Just some things in here.
Did you turn this off?
No, I have not, I gotta do that yet. There, and then this was.